Let me just state the vibe, the United States of America. And to a republic which stands one nation and above.
Thank you.
We do not have a closed session tonight, so the first thing on our agenda. Um, will be, and actually I'm going to do one quick housekeeping thing. Uh, and remind myself at the same time, because I've noticed that when we're uh online, it's very difficult for people to hear unless we speak directly into the microphone. So I would remind everyone and any of the uh. You who come to the podium, please do the same. Uh, all right. So the first thing on our agenda is the tonight's agenda.
Uh, in yeah, in that regard, um, Madam Mayor, I um. I it seems like items one through four of the consent agenda would be more appropriate as reports under, you know, staff reports. There's no action required by the council, so it was going to be my intention to pull those from the consent agenda. But I guess we can deal with it at this point also. I don't know, six or one, a half dozen of the other, but the way I see it, it, you know, unless it requires some kind of technical action. She'd come under staff reports or something.
Yeah.
I I intend one through four from the consent agenda.
Okay. And pulling, you don't want to pull them into the radio agenda, you want to put them in the staff report, is that correct?
Yes, yes, I don't, I don't want a discussion on it. It just seems.
But they just said administratively better with the staff. I I I would concur. Any other thoughts on them from the counselors?
Yeah, I would like to know what all those items are and then they can discuss a little bit more in detail.
So I guess I'll move to prove the agenda with with that. Amendment modification to the consent.
Can we go to public comments briefly first before we make the motion? Are there any public comments regarding that change in the categorization of divisions? All right, seeing that, go ahead, Bryce.
So I'll move approval of the agenda with the removal of items one through four from the consent agenda to staff report.
All right, and I will second. All those in favor, say aye. So moves. Uh, next we have on the agenda, the February eleventh, twenty twenty five minutes. Were there any questions or comments about minutes? Any public comments regarding minutes from February? Do you need any? So I will bring it back to the council. Or any motion? I believe if we accept the minutes.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Jack, seconded. All those in favor, aye. Okay, so those minutes are approved. And we will go on to the council reports and committee assignments. So I will, I'll start at this end. Perry, do you have anything you want to report?
I do. I went to. The RREDC meeting, redemptive meeting, um, and we had a presentation and discussion by Jeremy Smith. He's the chief of staff for California State Building Construction Treaty Council. Uh, we spoke about project labor agreements, um, and how they support, um. Keeping, you know, grants and funds for construction projects in Humboldt, and we made sure that we're including uh project labor agreements in our contracts. We're looking at anything, um, and this we haven't been doing that a whole lot in Humboldt, and we're just getting a lot of people coming, flying in to work for the league. Um, and it's our local, great people construct and work. Um, so there's people that in our future projects, construction projects. And then we just provided updates around what's been going on in various councils and um.
Yeah, um, let's see, last week I attended Humboldt Transit Authority Board Meeting, Humboldt Transit Authority. They have a bus service from. Down to Yucaya uh, uh, once a day, all the way up to Crescent City, um, and they provide bus service here in town every three hours. Um, one of the things that I was most interested in to bring you to the council is they're going to expand their dial ride service. So for seniors or people with disabilities to get to their doctor's appointments, it's really hard to just take a bus because the bus just drops you off. Doesn't get you to the appointment on time, so uh we're working on a better way to dial a ride to help seniors and other people with disabilities to get to their appointments on time. I think that's going to be a great new service for our community.
That one might be free?
It is not a free program, no.
How do they price?
I do not, I do not know that, but it's on their website. Uh, you have to call them.
The seniors paper.
Yes.
Uh, yes, the uh. The Trinidad Animal Advisory Committee met, uh, on. Wednesday, actually, I think. And there were a couple of uh, action items to report. Um, let's see, uh, there was some disagreement about our minutes and we agreed that we need to improve that. Uh, second uh, was um, uh, that uh. Commissioner Jackie Housker once introduced Sam Cuckins, who is the new Ranjaria Public Safety Animal Officer. Uh, then there, uh, we took a look at the new webpage for the animal uh services. And uh, there was an amendment recommended to uh. Uh, be specific about the ordinance, the uh leashing, dog leashing ordinance, and so we're doing that, but, or I guess we recommend it to council?
Um, I think you can ask staff to.
Okay.
Set, set.
Um, and then there was a motion to approve, uh, to direct staff to recommend to the council, which would be a recommendation tonight to change the ordinance, Trinidad ordinance. To allow the dog license fee update by resolution. And to update the animal control officer section to allow the city manager to designate the animal control officer. So, um. I I guess that went.
And is that something we need to put on the agenda then for council?
That is mayor, we will be working on that in the floor.
Great, thank you.
Um, and finally, uh, there was recommended that we have another meeting in short order in April, uh, in the agenda to include, um. Um, coastal pathogens, where there's some concern about pathogens on the beaches. And also about overlapping jurisdictions and leash laws as they apply. And any relevant issues regarding animal control, including the city ordinance, chapter seven. It was a very busy meeting.
Yes, it sounds like. Thank you. And we will have, uh, just for in terms of protocol, after the counselors give their report out, we will have an opportunity for uh public. Man or anyone who was at the meeting who wants to add something, so.
Yeah, I got the flu a couple of weeks ago, so I was not able to attend the HPO meeting, so I will have.
Is that action? I just have a couple of really quick ones. I attended the Humboldt Hazard Mitigation Planning Meeting, and that's really, uh, hazard mitigation is any sustained action. They can reduce or eliminate long-term risks from hazards to people or property. And so this is a county-wide initiative. Angela is really, uh, great trust on this, and I just, uh, attended so she could go to a major Z meeting. Um, but essentially there, you know, some of the things that I'm looking at are dam failures, droughts, earthquakes, tsunami, uh, you know, extreme temperature, et cetera. And we talked a lot about kind of what are the next steps for planning, what are the goals around, you know, hazard mitigation, um. Work, and then there's some upcoming meetings later in March, so we'll cover those as well. Um, there was a survey that went out. I put it on next door, but I think we need to maybe try to get it on our website if it's not already there. Is it? Oh, great, okay. So if you have a chance, check out the Hazard Mitigation Survey and fill it out. They're trying to get at least a thousand responses. Obviously, we're just a portion of that. And then I attended the Redwood Coast Energy Authority Meeting. Uh, very interesting. Their goal is to get to a hundred percent renewable, carbon-free, and a hundred percent local renewable by twenty thirty. Um, their mid-year budget review was quite positive, you know, positive cash flow, they had a surplus of of cash. Um, they're very obviously energy sales dependent, so rate changes really, really impact them. Uh, but they've done a really good job of expense control, and they got some program dollars back, and so they ended at mid-year much ahead of schedule. In terms of their budget on the upside, I guess I would say. Um, one thing that was kind of a low light was a discussion about federal impact, federal funding impacts. That they're feeling, um, for example, the tribal energy resilience and sovereignty project, the wind power, um, is on hold right now, so that was kind of a big deal. And then solar, um, is at risk and any of those types of things. So that kind of, you know, really impacts, I'm looking at Jack, because he's our main person on this committee, but. Um, that really impacts their ability to, you know, um, meet their goals. Also, that was interesting. And that's all I have. Um, any questions from the council on any of the reports? I've seen then over to the public for any added comments, questions that you have for the council.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Berry, eight twenty nine Edwards. My other question was whether we could get an update on the issue that was raised at the last two. Two consummate stuff, signage on Edwards. I know you guys are working on it, but just kind of maybe an update for where we are. We're talking with an engineer.
Okay, I'm going to count that as items from the floor, and I'm just saying that.
Is that real?
That uh, so we'll just kind of, uh, we'll come back to items from the floor, but I'm going to answer, we should answer your question now. And that is, I I think we're looking at April or May. We're waiting for some engineering, one more engineering, engineering recommendation. And we're going to try to get it on soon, so hoping for next month, but it could be May, so.
We we are waiting back from the one engineer to respond to our calls.
So hopefully sooner rather than later. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, with that, um, I'm going to move on to staff reports, and this will be, uh, the city manager will include Humboldt County Sheriff's Department. We're also getting here from Pacific Coast Security and the first four items that were on the consent agenda. I'll bring it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll take the first whack at this, uh. This is just a recap of what has happened, uh, for us here at the city of Trinidad over the last month, so we had a CSA four meeting. Uh, CSA four is, uh, fire services for this part of the county, West Haven Fire, Trinidad, uh, Cal Fire, uh, and District. West Haven, uh. The group included supervisor Madron, uh, members of county staff, Cal Fire, West Haven Fire, and Trinidad Fire, and Trinidad Ranjaria. Uh, the initial discussion was for the value and need for a feasibility study for fire services for C, for the CSA four group. The group really, uh, agreed, uh, and strongly suggested that we continue to look for volunteers for the fire department. So, uh, our fire chief, uh, is interested in anyone that wants to be a member of the of the volunteer fire department. Um, I think there was some question on what kind of things the fire department does, and and a lot of their. Calls are for medical needs, so for those folks out there who are listening that may have an interest and and have some. Or no experience in that area, uh, the chief would really like to have a discussion with you and and maybe, uh, get you involved in the volunteer fire department. We're going to continue the study. We're going to meet with, uh, with the group at the end of March, uh, to kind of fine tune the one, uh, proposal that was, uh, provided. Uh, try to get a better proposal, uh. Out, uh, then we got back. Uh, we're going to try to find team some of the requests and some of the deliverables. So I will have more to report on that at the, uh, our next council meeting. A water update, so for those of you, uh, who are listening closely to this part of the meeting, Coleman Sandbell Engineering, I did, I do not have a current invoice for them. Uh, the good news for us is we have a new interim CPO. Eric Sanders, who will be on board on March nineteenth, though Coleman Sandbell's last day is March eighteenth. The new agreement for the interim CPO will be capped at four thousand a month for essentially the same services that provided by Coleman. So they'll be up here at least once a month and and answering the phone and helping with reporting requirements, uh, without, it all, it's all cost inclusive. Uh, we do have two more staff members who are taking their water treatment exam for T two next week. Uh, there will be a thousand contact hours, which will come pretty quickly to take their T three. We have one staff member who is preparing for his T three, uh, and he will be very close to the required hour to qualify to act as a CPO, so. We're building a a bench, uh, we'll have some backups, and we have an interim CPO in place that's going to help reduce costs in the short term. So we have some short-term stuff working for us, and we have some longer-term stuff that also is looking pretty promising. Jimmy, water tank, uh, water discussions, water tank and pipeline, uh, we had a big week, is that two weeks ago? No, uh, big week with the shutdown.
February eighteen.
February eighteen, thank you. Uh, we had a shutdown on February eighteen. We had a few weeks of prep for that, so thank you for all the folks that helped, uh, participate and make that a success. Uh. For us, the school was closed that week, so that was one of the big concerns we had. We want to thank the Ranjaria for helping us manage that, because they're another large customer. Uh, it went very well. We were able to turn it back on just about on time, um, and extend operations extent. So you now have two tanks online, uh, playing water. Uh, the the water staff worked day and night to keep the plant running in in the time between that. The tank turning on and off and all the shutdowns, it was quite a lot for that little plant to kind of manage in our staff. So hats off to those folks that helped, Gabe and Angela and and the water plant staff, Anton, everybody kind of pitched in to their part. Don't make that a success, so thank you very much. West Haven Entertight Project, you have, I've seen you before you in MOU. We met with West Haven, uh, director and general manager yesterday to. Fine tune some of the points that they, uh, had some questions on, and tonight I'm happy to say that what you have on the table before you tonight is an agreement between both of us. So there's no need for further negotiation. Thanks to the mayor and the vice mayor for attending that meeting and helping us get this deal done. We couldn't have done it without you. The next goal would be to have the plant specs and engineering out by the middle of April so that we can go to bid and hopefully get, uh, competitive pricing, um, before before it gets too late in the destruction season. I attended a regional climate action plan meeting. Uh, they talked about, uh, data from vehicle miles traveled, so it's interesting to find out where they get that data from now. I mean, it's basically everything, car or watches or phones. Uh, so that data is out there. It's being marketed and sold and packaged in a variety of different ways and, uh. Just it's fascinating to me how they're grabbing that data out of. Wherever we're at and and using it for a variety of different purposes, so, um, that information will be coming back to us as a part of the. Climate Action Plan, as the mayor discussed earlier, so we will see, uh, what that means for us during Trinidad. Measure Z, there was a grant, uh, funded program in Humboldt County Sales Tech Measure for Essential Services. We did apply for a fifty-seven thousand dollar grant for our water plant equipment that we need to repair or replace. Uh, before our annual section this spring, unfortunately, um. Finished just out of the money. The sheriff, uh, department is going to probably use whatever remainder there is. If there is some additional funding, then we're pretty close to that block of the line of being able to get funded. Not clear that the supervisors are going to put us into that funding route, so we will continue looking for grant funding opportunities, but the measures. Are just, so. Keep trying. On with that, I think the next folks up, Mayor on your list, whoever's next.
Do you have questions for Joe on the staff report from the council? I would like to just say that I think, um, you know, in less than ninety days, I think that you've been on board. You've, um, done a. A great job of handling the situation that we had at the water plant with. Home and engineering, I've gotten so much, we've gotten as a council so much feedback over the last six months or year that, um, you know, how expensive. Handled that, uh, you know, operation was, like, they could, you know, the consulting. And so this is a vast improvement from that, so I want to thank Joe and recognize him with that, so.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. We would like to shout for the help, council for giving really clear guidance on what you all expected in sixty-five days, but, Mayor.
I know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so, um, I think the next thing on our list then is the, um, we're going to talk about budget later, so let's go to law enforcement. And I believe Lieutenant McCall is, uh, here with us? Hello, Lieutenant McCall, please go ahead and give us your, uh, your report if you would.
All right, good evening. So, yeah, uh, looking at stats for February, um. Looking at the city of Trinidad itself, confined to those city limit areas, it looks like we had a total of twenty-three, um, total incidents or calls for service, uh, during that month. Uh, four of those being transfers to other agencies, and then, uh, nothing else super significant in that. We had like three civil standbys, uh, some Trinidad patrols, a couple of abandoned vehicles, a couple of patrol checks, and then a a bunch of one each of, uh, other just various things, uh. Agency assists, so that'd be like fire, medical, one animal issue, uh, camping violation, a general disturbance, a couple of public assist, special detail calls. Uh, a welfare check, uh, kind of rounds out those calls for Trinidad proper for the month of February. Like I said, nothing that that, uh, definitely nothing that stands out. Um, and I apologize here, I lost my place on my screen. Looking at the stats for February for the greater Trinidad area, inclusive of West Haven and and those outline areas outside of, uh. City limits, but still, you know, trickling in and out of of Trinidad proper, uh, it's like we had a total of a hundred and twelve calls for service, which was down from January by about fifty calls from from the previous month. Uh, with that, the reports taken were also down. We had nine in January, that was down to five in February, uh, one arrest for the month of February. Uh, two felony investigations, which was up one from the previous month, and five misdemeanor investigations, which was up two from the previous month. Um, again, looking at those other various calls that are that are in that, uh, it's like we had one, one reported burglary of a of a vehicle or building. One other general theft, a general disturbance, a couple of alarm calls, uh, several, like, a handful of, uh, it looks like a total of eight, uh, between patrol checks between. Uh, whether that be business checks for patrols or just patrol checks of the area. Um, five unwanted subject or camping type calls, uh, and then, uh. One suspicious person, one traffic stop, and then of those other kind of random calls that don't fit into those main categories, it looks like there was a total of, uh, ninety-two miscellaneous call, calls that were tallied for for the month of February. Which was again down from the previous month, uh, which was at a hundred and twenty-six for January. Um, that's what I have for stats, uh, again, nothing significant going on, uh, in the greater Trinidad area that's, uh. Crime trend wise or anything like that that's come across my desk that I'm I'm aware of or seeing from these stats. Um, only other thing I will share, which is, uh, uh, I was, uh, met with the city manager earlier today and and shared with him as well, as we just promoted, uh, well. We just finished sergeant testing, um, and have identified a a promotional deputy who's going to be promoting the sergeant next month. Um, while he will be working the Eureka area, the shift he is going to has been down to one sergeant because of that vacancy. Um, and that sergeant that's currently in Eureka will be, uh, moving back up to the McKinleyville area. So that'll definitely be a a help of, it just, you know, gives us better supervisory control, another another body up and up in the the north area there, and, you know, just kind of cuts down on that. That gap and and and, you know, kind of more centralized supervision supervision and and spreads that out a little bit and just makes it a little bit, a little bit easier on our end. Um, for our deputies and stuff, having that supervisor typically more readily available and in that area, so. Uh, I think that's about all I have, other than any questions for me.
Any questions for Lieutenant McCall from the council? Any questions for Lieutenant McCall from the public? Right, I see then, I will bring it back to the council. Thank you, Lieutenant McCall. I know you've got a lot to do, so we won't keep you unless you would like to stay. And I think we're going to have a presentation from our civic coast security next, is that right, Joe?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll invite Gene F to kind of introduce himself and tell us a little bit about civic coast security.
So, well, I'm Gene F, I'm the owner of Civic Coast Security, also the state qualified manager for the company. So, uh, did you want to hear from me or do you have questions?
Yeah, I I think maybe a little bit about what maybe, um, you know, kind of. What you have kind of seen over the last several months, I mean, I think it's been about a year now that since.
Okay, so just to give you kind of some of the background, we, uh, we do this similar type patrol service from, uh, Brexton License in the state of California, but mostly what we do is, uh. Humboldt, Del Mar, Mendocino County, uh, your your area here is definitely unique for us. It's it's nice. It's it's a change of pace for us. Uh, we've been up here for a while now, and, uh, I I really haven't seen an uptick or it's kind of kind of stayed steady up here as far as, uh, identified problems. But, uh, typically for us, uh, we'll see an increase this time of year, more tourists, uh, we get a lot of, uh. A lot of tourist questions during the time we're up here. Uh, I I realized early on that not all cell service works up here. So when we're we're somewhere, we often will, uh, tourists will flag us down for various reasons, mostly because they lose their GPS signal on their phone. Uh, so we have, we do take a lot of questions and, uh, answers for folks and hopefully give them advice on how to get to places. Often we let them use our wifi under our hotspot because we use Verizon, so we'll let them do that, um. Quite a few, um, folks that we've we've met here that are absentee owners, I guess we call them, that have rentals and they're in the short-term rentals. We've made contact with them through the course of patrolling and, uh, exchanged information and how to contact them if, uh, we do find, uh, open doors, that type of stuff. Or if they need our stuff to check on their property, uh, quite a few of the residents here have our number, so we do, we do take calls, uh, and, uh, information and things to follow up when we're up here. Um, our calls to the sheriff's department are relatively low, um, we don't, uh. I'm trying to think, I don't think we've sent anybody to jail, uh, which is, which is amazing, um, we've had a few people, uh. Decide to leave the area, you know, instead of instead of going to jail, given our opportunity to just kind of vacate, uh, police themselves. But overall, the response from the community and tourists and even your transient population has been very positive towards us.
Do you guys make citizen's arrests?
We we can't, yes. Yeah, I mean, typically, we, you know, we we try to bring the sheriff's department in, but, um, you know, if somebody is aggressively behaving up here, we we would affect assistance arrest. Call the sheriff's department, hand them over to the sheriff's department.
I'd like to thank you. I I see your car around. Sometimes it's you, sometimes it's somebody else with the same car. And it's always comforting, and I hear from people who are out walking too, that they, that it just gives a feeling that somebody's watching and is there if we need it. Thank you.
Yeah, and we've been, uh, up here, we we don't get a lot of calls for service per se, but I seem to stumble on things because it's a small town. Um, just a couple, uh, last week, there was a traffic accident, you probably heard about it, upon, uh, West Haven and, uh, off the opera ramp there. And, uh, I've been fortunate to be out in front of City Hall and the Saturn goes off. Break out, uh, as soon as the Saturn went off, I was, I was going this direction and, uh. And I don't monitor the fire frequencies, but I turned on the radio to try to listen and see. As soon as I turned on the radio, I saw a flasher down there. There was a single car traffic accident down there. And, uh, I was able to be, uh, first time seen for that and directed traffic until CHP and, uh, Cal Fire, I believe West Haven showed up as well, but it was a minor injury.
All right, I think what I'd like to do then is, um, you know, see if there are some public questions or comments either on, um, Joe's report, because we had, you know, this is all part of one topic, or, or questions for civic coast security. So I will turn it over to the public. Okay, I don't see any, uh, burning questions. I think, um, one thing that, um, I, I would love to have, I know you guys are really busy, is, you know, regular, having you here is great and, you know, just cut, as questions come up, maybe every, you know, once a quarter or something, I think that would work and, and then we could ask questions and things. But, um, I, I get a lot of good kind of anecdotal
Yeah, traditionally, what we've been doing is anything significant, we let, uh, get him on, let him disseminate that, uh, which seems to be working pretty well. Um, but if you want a different process, we can definitely do that. Uh, we don't keep a ton of stats, uh, because most of the contact we make or the patrols that we regularly do are so, um, regular, you know, we would probably have three pages of the same check, but, uh, you know, we try to, we try to routinely check your residential areas and drive through and often residents will just stop and chat us, you know, chat us out or report, uh, maybe suspicious vehicle or something, but, um, you know, somebody maybe that's traveling through town got their attention, we just observe them, so we have to, we call the sheriff's department. But, uh, generally, it's just more of a presence that maybe there's people along that, you know, and we work well with the tribal folks down there at the beach, which is, gets pretty busy down there. We do a lot of, uh, I say we do a lot, but if somebody discovered we have, if there are keys out of their cars, we do some lockout stuff with people occasionally and, um, jump start quite a few cars.
Yeah.
Uh, so, you know, and we don't charge for any of that, so it's, it's a good public service because most of the time when we have to, uh, call a tow truck down here, I think the fastest we've ever seen was maybe an hour. So, um, it's nice, we can just jump start their car, I give them a loan.
Okay, that's really good. And yeah, I, I heard, but, you know, people have mentioned to me that they broke down and that civic coast security came by and kind of, they just felt reassured that it was night or this or that. So that's nice. Um, I know when we first started talking, the museum, library, you know, community park was a big issue. I'm looking at Patty because, you know, we spoke about this. Is this helping from your perspective?
Yeah, like, it's Katie's invention. It's just nice to have your presence. I think it acts as a deterrent um, for people that are hanging out near the library, the museum and the park that, um, don't attract this kind of library and museum clientele that we'd like to see.
Yeah, you guys have a nice area up here. I mean, you're, you're fortunate, um, uh, I mean, we, we work all over and, and I'm sure the sheriff's department can attest that, uh, you guys have got a very nice community up here and, and in my opinion, probably one of the safest ones. So it's, uh, it's a nice change of pace for everybody. So it's, uh, it's a pleasant, pleasant experience to be up here.
Well, it's made a difference to have your vehicle wandering around.
Yeah, if anybody has questions, um, obviously you guys have got my email, my phone number, um, feel free to text, or email, or
Okay, and I, I noticed Anna Davis had a quick question for you.
I just want, I want to be, uh, thank you.
For the Trinidad to climb beach run? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I do have some recommendations on the plan to be run for next year, if somebody's taking those.
Why, why don't, why don't you when I talk about that?
Yes, yes.
You're gonna run next year?
Some safety recommendations, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But that was a great example, if you want, we're able to help out with that, so.
Thanks. Bye. I, um, don't see any other questions. I just really appreciate you coming up here and
Appreciate you, yeah.
Update.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, look me for my office. Where I'm at. All right, so let's move on to, my husband thought it was happening, yeah. Um, let's move on to, we are still on staff reports and I believe, um, one of the things that we decided to do for the person who just joined was to move items one through four of the consent agenda to the, uh, staff report. So we are, we've just finished the law enforcement, we have number three, we're now on number four. The Ocean Protection Council, SB one grant funding for the Axolotl Memorial Trail. If staff wants to give us just a couple of minutes update on that, then the council and public can ask questions.
Sure, mayor, uh, I'm, I'm trying to, oh, Angela knocked it up and down, so, uh, uh, we didn't have much to comment on this, we just wanna leave it as a placeholder, let you know that we are still working on it. Uh, we will have more report in the next quarter, uh, but for this quarter, we're kind of, trying to gather costs and, and actually figure out what a good estimate would be for this project before we come back to council with, uh, additional.
Okay, and questions from the council on this item? I mean, I understand that it's gonna come back, so this is just, I note that this is a work in progress, right?
Yes.
Questions from the public? You need to contribute today? Thank you, mayor. Uh, regarding the Ocean Protection Council grant application for the Axolotl Memorial Trail, we're very supportive of that, but we would like to be included in the discussion. And, um, there was a meeting previously scheduled that was never held. Um, and so, uh, before we move forward, we need to reschedule that meeting to discuss the overall plan. And it would be really good to have the technical detail, whatever there is so far. Be able to have Trinidad Rancheria, tribal council and executive staff be able to comment on that and maybe assist with, you know, previous experience on, um, like applying for grants and the infrastructure. All right, thank you. Um, would we do this as a G to G, Joe?
We, we could do that, mayor. Um, there's also time during the council meeting, of course, with public comments to chime in, but, uh, we can talk and then we'll get back with, uh, Debbie.
Okay, so we may need to agendize to, uh, select and find a time that works for the rent funding award. And as well as, um, select two council members. Traditionally, it's been the mayor and the mayor pro temp, but it doesn't have to be, it can be voted on by the council, so. Sounds All right, uh, let's see, any other public comments regarding this? I don't. Okay, thank you. With that, then we will, uh, move on to so, as we did number one through four, so we have a consent agenda item and the MOU between the city of Trinidad and Tri Heights. And since we kind of did this a little bit differently, I guess I'll ask if anyone wants to pull that for discussion from the consent. Okay, so the council, uh, does not, but I remember the community does, so we now need, we'll bring it back to the council.
I'll pull it on behalf of the community.
Thank you, thank you. I'm just gonna ask that. All right, well, with that, um, would you mind just kind of giving us the highlights of this?
I will give you the highlights, mayor. Uh, this MOA was requested by the, uh, the Cherya Heights Indian Community of the Trinidad Rancheria. It's gonna help them, uh, and us better apply for, they're gonna apply for some grants and they need this MOA to be able to apply for some of the grants for, uh, roads improvements, uh, for access to the Rancheria and Rancheria jurisdictional boundary areas. Uh, this MOA, this MOA will give them, uh, the permission they need from us to be able to do that.
Okay, and does this also, does this enable in any way the city to, for example, reconstruct the boardwalk on Edwards, or is this not?
No, this is different, 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 uh, different projects. This is for the tribe specifically to apply for grants as
Yes.
Uh, and they're doing the same thing with the county side of their, uh, road system as well, so.
And then I guess one of the questions in this may be for, um, possibly Congress to answer, I'm not sure, or could, yeah, go ahead.
So just one example, mayor, the recent main break that we had on Rancheria property, uh, damaged the road a good bit and there's some down slope uh, movement that the Rancheria has identified as, as needing repair. So this is kind of one of those examples where they would use a grant fund to apply and repair that piece of road and the, and the bank and possibly help us with water line replacement as well, because the county wants us to move that water line more in, inboard of the curve instead of the outside place that it currently occupies. So, uh, that's just an example of something that Rancheria will use our MOA to kind of bolster their argument for, uh, grant funding.
Now, uh, the, uh, boundaries that are identified in figure, attachment A include the, um, Galindo Trail. And should I be concerned about that in this MOU or should, is that not a, uh, consideration?
No, it's just, they just listed all roads that kind of
Yeah, that's not, oh.
Access to their, to their jurisdictional boundaries, so they included all the roads and, and areas that had access to those jurisdictions. And Galindo, just for those folks listening and for folks here, Galindo Street, uh, actually goes down through past the Galindo Trail on paper and, and into that part of the their jurisdictional boundary. So even though there's not a road down there, it does continue on paper.
I see, okay. Do you wanna comment, Jackie, I'm just more of a question, um.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'm city manager. Um, I had not had an opportunity, looks to review the staff report until today. And the reason I asked for it to be pulled off is I found an error in the attachment A, um, that was overlooked by our plant and our engineers. Um, the seaside parking route zero three two two, uh, section ten and twenty is already within Rancheria boundary. So I have a revised attachment A that takes it off. And then we're happy to continue this item to another agenda, um, because of the anomaly and the error that we found.
I think she, I think we included that in the current MOA that we have before us now, right, Dave? I think we got that from your staff earlier.
Uh, I just received it tonight.
Oh, okay.
The exhibit A that you have in your staff report includes seaside parking and it should not.
Okay.
There's two sections that are incorrect on that attachment.
Yeah.
Uh, but if I may, I would like to speak to a few of the other items. Um, I'm gonna be meeting with the city manager and discussing the boardwalk project and then also our interpretive center project. And those are the two areas in question. Um, Galindo Trail is an easement and it does kind of zigzag onto city, onto tribal property. And one corner of our interpretive center will be on, on that easement, built as it is now. Uh, on the boardwalk, we fully support that project, fully re-support that being rebuilt. The problem is tribal council does not want and cannot, without a lot of uh, incredibly detailed work that might take years, cannot rent an easement for the boardwalk if it's on tribal property. But what we had done with the stormwater vault was a provisional landowner agreement. And that's what we're hoping to do with both boardwalk and Galindo Trail. To, you know, an MOU between the city and whatever that our attorneys decide is the best, uh, legal document. And, uh, city manager has sent me a template document that's with my legal right now. So I know we need to work those two things out and I know the boardwalk project is time sensitive. So I'm hoping we can get to that right away. Uh, and then back to the, the inventory. Uh, city manager is a hundred percent correct. When it's a city road, um, say Edward Street blew out or, you know, one of, one of your roads, if it's on our inventory, we can apply for funding.
Okay.
We can apply for funding and enter into an agreement with the city in order to support that project. Um, and what he mentioned with the camp, with the, uh, water line that just blew out, that's the second time it's blown out in the last year. And, um, luckily, the time before Indian Health Service put in a valve so the water could be turned off, which was great. So the pipe has just been reconnected as is, as it was previously. But what we need to do is relocate it to the other side of the road. So that in the future, as that slope slips, then it's not gonna tear that pipe apart. It has a better chance of, of, um, not, not losing it. So the mitigation would be to move it to the other side of the road. We also are waiting for emergency funding to repair, see, driving that location that we have been told that we have, but that's held up in all of the bureaucracy that's happening federally right now. So, um, yeah, it's, it's really, the inventory means we do not receive funding for it. But we can do projects on it. And we can apply for funding for it, but it, it's not generating funding. So, and it's, it's our access roads to our tribal lands. So my transportation director, Leslie Sanders, is on, uh, Zoom and Leslie, I'm just wondering if there's anything you'd like to add if I missed anything.
I apologize, my connection is not well, so.
Can you turn your volume up, Leslie?
I'm sorry, I was, I got muted. Um, no, I think you've covered it well, Jackie. And again, I apologize not catching the anomaly on, on the previous attachment A. Um, it, it, it should be noted, this is, only provides us the opportunity to work with the city as you stated. If Edwards would go out, if it is on our inventory, we can apply for funding and do an MOA with the city. If roads are not on our inventory, we cannot apply for funding. There's one opportunity a year to get roads added. The opportunity is now.
Thank you, Leslie. And as city manager mentioned, we do have these agreements, uh, with Cal Trans, with county as well. Yeah, uh, have these roads in the past have, have been on our inventory. So thank you so much. I apologize for the error.
Oh, no worries. And, and it won't impact you if we continue this?
No, it will not. It will not. We can, we can get that correct attachment, revise the the maps and then, um, perhaps by then, city manager and I will have had a chance to talk about the other projects.
Are there any questions, uh, Jackie's here from the council, this MOU, and then we'll pass on to your special, I guess, we'll be
Okay, um, as they say on, uh, email, good catch. Check.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's, it's super hard in my job to read every single document that comes through, but I try. And I just got, you know, got lucky this time and caught something because usually, usually it's Leslie that catches everything.
Right. Yeah, I kind of noticed that about the parking strip and I kind of went, is that a property? I really wasn't sure.
Yeah, there's the little strip that goes kind of diagonally across the parking lot that is city jurisdiction.
Right, not the one to
But not, not these sections, yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Any comments or questions on this item? And then I think we will move, we're gonna move to continue this, um, discussion, um, for the updated materials. And so I also move any, there's a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. All right, so the next, uh, we're on our regularly scheduled agenda item now. Number one, discussion decision regarding the revised MOU between the city of Trinidad and the West Haven Community Services District. This is the water system in your time, but This is the water system intertime product. So I will turn it over to staff for an update.
So, um. No, I just. So my staff report is a little out of date, as the city manager noted in his report. We met yesterday with the general manager and operator, Paul Rosenrath for West Haven Community Service District. And also their board's vice president, Dick Hinkin. Uh, we discussed the MOU that was given to West Haven for comment. And our discussions and negotiations led to a few changes to that MOU. Uh, those updates are provided in the published packet online for anyone following along. Also council and public updated MOU as well. Uh, the staff recommendation remains the same and that staff recommends that the council approve the MOU between the city and West Haven Community Service District regarding the intertime project. Um, and then just to kind of go through some of the notable changes. Generally, um, everything that I've already noted in my staff report remains the same in terms of goals and responsibilities. There are shared responsibilities now that we've agreed upon, and that's that the city and West Haven jointly share responsibility in testing the intertime pump station. Also putting them into operation. Uh, cost sharing has changed. Um, during our discussions, we came to an agreement that in the event that there are cost overruns. And we've exhausted all of our other options, we can require additional grant funding. Uh, that any additional funds required to complete construction shall be portioned to the city and district. Uh, at the following percentages of fifty for fifty percent for the city, fifty percent for West Haven, um, but only up to fifty thousand. And then in the event that any additional funds are still required to complete construction exceed that fifty thousand. The remainder of the cost overruns can be cost shared based on relative average water sales of both West Haven and the city. Um, modifications also were made to exhibit C, which is also provided in the packet. And I just addressed the operations and maintenance tasks responsibilities and cost sharing. Uh, some of those tasks were specifically delegated to West Haven and others were delegated to the city. Um, items such as pump repairs, that would be a split cost, fifty fifty between the city and West Haven. While other items such as like a larger repair or a pump replacement. That would be cost shared based on the relative average pumping water sales of West Haven and the city as well. Um, and then there were just very minor changes made to exhibit D, which addressed the most and responsibilities of each. And that's also provided in the packet. Um, and then. Ground disturbing activities, as I noted, that was added to the MOU, and that has still been included. And also the advanced payment of four hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars for the construction phase of the project. Is going to be transferred from West Haven to the city as we are how we can take control of the construction contract. The project. Uh, and those are the updates that I have.
Thank you, Angela. Uh, can also members, any questions for Angela on this item?
Uh, I have one question. It's sort of a what if? Uh, if West Haven has excessive need of water, say it's fire. And Trinidad has excessive need of water, say it's fire. How is that? And we can run through our resources very quickly. However, that been thought about?
That's the answer I do not have.
Well, I I think the fire department would have to, you know, on the ground at that point, figure out where they need the water the most and. Who's got how much in their tanks. They they'd be able to handle a situation like that.
Yeah, the NIMSS and SIMSS program that fire operates under those conditions would then determine. Need and is going to prevail the patent order in that mean. Help you a fire chief decision.
I think the nice thing is being able to load balance too in a situation where, let's say. You know, we had a fire in Trinidad, several houses or something. And we ran out of water. That's where we go to this emergency intertime and pull, you know, water from West Haven or vice versa if the situation is on their side. I mean, that's during a drought. You know, this is going to be really beneficial in a drought. Um, if one or the other of us.
I think a good example is what happened in December when we had a water main break and a fire on the same evening and and it. Did our water storage flow. Well, fairly alarming level. And had we had the intertime, we would have been able to rely on West Haven of us in that. Allow our courage where we needed water.
And I guess I will mention also, um, council member Tuttle mentioned at the end of our last meeting. A future topic that he would like to see on the agenda about connection to. Lobeay Municipal Water District, but specifically a partnership or or working with the Ranjaria. Uh, to potentially have an emergency intertie uh there. And that would need to be agendaized and maybe we need to discuss that, but I want to mention that because Jack brought that up. This project is nothing to do with that and this grant cannot be repurposed for that in any way. So I just wanted to mention that. Just out of respect for you mentioning that, Jack, I didn't want to let you think we dropped it. Okay, uh, how about members of the public? Any questions from the members of the public? They've already decided. I don't think, I think we're good. We probably don't, West Haven probably. Has no comments because they submitted all the changes, so. Yes.
I just have one quick question in the. Backup documentation for the project. I'm wondering if it's a typo. Um, in the project description at the end of that paragraph, it says. The pump station and pipe design will be designed for a maximum flow of approximately one hundred gallons was stricken. It was trapped changes taken out and it was changed to twenty to forty gallons per minute. But saying the project will increase water supply. So I'm just wondering what the hundred gallons and.
The hundred gallons was the initial project. At the very early stages of what they were looking at for the project needs. And then once they did the calculations, they realized that that was wildly. Over hoping so. It's probably down to twenty forty gallon per minute.
Okay. So there's an existing grant?
There is.
Okay. And was that number in the grant? Twenty to forty or the?
Yeah, that helped us kind of manage the grant into it into the. Into the budget.
So the one hundred was pretty good.
The one hundred was a different, yeah, that was that was the grant was, I think Angela can answer that question better than me, but.
We submitted.
It was.
Okay.
It was the early scope of the project. Once we did the engineering and and studies, then we realized it was overbuilt, so we scaled it down.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions from the public panelists? I don't know. Right, back to the council, Jack. I think you want to ask.
Yeah, I hear that, um, you know, Trinidad cleans their water at a higher standard than. West Haven. And I hear that sometimes they're on a boil notice. Um, would that be if they ever gave us water into our pipeline system, would we have to then? Notify the public about a boil notice here locally in town?
If if there is a boil water notice, and yes, they we would be a part of that, but I I don't think they're under a boil water notice for everything. They they have issued boil water notices, but not currently boil water notice.
Okay.
And that would only be, unless I'm mistaken, that would only be in the instance that we were taking advantage of the intertime, right? Like in in general, we're operating completely separately, so.
Very.
But yes, we use their water, we would have to.
Yeah, and I asked that question, uh, council member Tuttle, uh, from West Haven, and they said they have only had a a few of those and they've been. Quite a few years ago. And they're working to, uh. Have a more, uh, higher quality water system, build a water treatment plant, so, um.
Okay, so we have gone to public and back to council, so we are ready to entertain a motion. Um, I guess I I believe we need to go on this, so I will move to approve the, uh. Current iteration of the MOU for the West Haven Trinidad intertie.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Angela and Joe for the hard work on that. And thank you, West Haven. I don't know if there's. In the meeting at the moment, but we appreciate the partnership. Uh, okay, so let's go on to discussion decision to accept the FY twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three audit. And is there a staff discussion on this to?
We have a short, a short primer on our audit and, uh, and then we'll have question and answer time. So we completed our audit. The one comment from our auditor was that we were a little outside of the. Regulatory requirement of one within the here. Uh. We commented on that to the auditor that we were in the minute middle of some changes with city manager and some other staff challenges. Accepted those comments and the good news is we are, uh, in negotiations right now to have them back, uh, in April to do our twenty twenty four. Uh, so we will be well in line with finishing our budget on time and what we've been doing regulation. So we. Hopefully corrected that deficiency there. Other than that, we don't have any items to report. The auditor was clean.
I may have missed this, but maybe sure. When will we? Do we have a timeline for the twenty four, twenty?
So April nineteenth or twenty first, it will be onsite. And then again, May in the beginning of May, they will be onsite. And I would guess it would take a month or so to get. The audit findings out, so we would hope to see them by the end of FY. Uh, twenty four, twenty five. So along with our budget approval, we will hopefully have the audit.
All right. Thank you for getting us back on track.
I think we need to thank City Park. He's really the person who's been helping to manage it.
All right, yes, and yeah, I meant staff, Dave, Angela. Thank you. Questions for Joe on this or Dave?
Okay. I would just comment that it's good to see there are books of past muster. The powers that be.
Definitely. Any public comments or questions about the audit? All right, I will bring it back. Any questions online about the audit? I'll bring it back to the council. If you guys see, it's behind my head, the screen. So if you see, maybe raise our hands. Let me know. Um. I'll bring it back to the council. And don't, do we need a move, a motion to move? Do we need a motion to approve?
I mean, it's always good to have a motion there.
Thank you. Is there a move to accept the FY twenty twenty two or twenty three audit?
So you're moving or?
No, I asked everyone.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I thought I'd take turns.
We accept the, uh.
Okay.
Twenty three, twenty four.
And Katie, okay, Katie is section D. And thank you, Bryce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And as we were discussing that, I I meant to kind of change the flow of meeting this tab. Because I did not finish the items from the floor. So I want to make sure that anyone in the community who wants and wishes to. Can bring up a topic that is not on today's agenda. And since I I kind of skipped over that, then. Is there anything else anybody wants to talk about for a few minutes?
I already did mine, right?
I know, because I've already done mine. Mr. Barry did bring up when are we going to talk about the Edward Street crosswalk contact again, and we we did discuss that. So thank you for that. But I just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone else. Okay. All right. We're good. All right, let's move on then. To the mid-year update for the budget, twenty four, twenty five budget. And so this will be a good discussion about where we're at with the budget and also some requests for some other additional items. Um, for the town hall renovation and for the, uh. Employee classification compensation. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have before you a update for our mid-year budget. We also have a request for some. Budget adjustments for town hall, most front porch and rock repair and for a classification compensation study. Uh. As we get into our our. Our budget review, uh, first slide. Uh, I think the good news for our budget review is that, uh. You all, I I think it's important first to to set the stage for what exactly we're discussing. So. Uh, in FY twenty twenty four, twenty five, you approved a budget of nine fifty nine, five, five, six. Uh, the revenues that you approved were nine twenty three, seven thirty two. So there was about a thirty five thousand dollar gap within there. Um, it was a very conservative revenue projection. Uh, and that's kind of typical for for most agencies. They tend to kind of look at things conservatively and and. Under promise and over deliver, which in this case has turned out very well for us, or it's looking pretty good as of December. Next slide here. So these are the T O T and sales tax. So in FY, you you approved the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in transit occupancy tax as a. As a budget projection as of December twenty four, we were at a hundred and forty nine thousand one hundred and fifty seven dollars, which is about sixty nine percent of that budgeted amount. Uh, I will say that, uh, we did get the January numbers and and they're tracking right along with this projection, so. I would guess that we're going to be a bit ahead of that two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar number. Uh, we're closing that gap, that that thirty five thousand dollar gap pretty quickly. Sales taxes is kind of the same. It's running a little bit behind T O T. At fifty four percent, but it's still ahead of projections. And again, the January numbers showed sales tax, uh. Slightly below this summer for January, but we're coming into our busy year season. So the fact that we're tracking ahead in December for all these numbers, uh. Looks well for our budget going forward. Next slide. Water Enterprise Fund, which is always the topic of discussion here in town. So council did authorize a one-time budget transfer from the general fund of three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, as of. February seventeenth, our water fund balance was a ninety nine thousand dollar deficit. So. When I took over, it was around four hundred and fifty one thousand dollars in the red. Uh, in January, we transferred that three hundred thousand dollars. Council approved a budget, a rate adjustment or a rate plan in. October of twenty twenty four, it went into effect in November of twenty twenty four. So we're still seeing the effects of that rate increase. Um. It did, the rate increased, did call for some additional cash from council if needed. At this point, after discussion with staff, uh, we're going to try to analyze this budget a little bit more before we come back and ask for money from council. We're going to try to operate on a cash flow basis. And hopefully, uh, the cash flow that we have will help cover some of the expenses that we have for some of our plant needs. Having a. A known budget for the CPO, and our CPO is going to help us manage this budget a little better. Uh, at four thousand a month. And there's, we don't foresee any general fund loans needed at this time. We are having a. Discussion tomorrow with our partner from R C A C. Who's going to help us dig into these numbers a little bit better so that we can understand them a little bit more and come back to council, uh. Uh, later in the year, uh, when we come back for budget discussions and and be able to discuss. The water budget a little bit more in depth, and we'll have a little bit more data to be able to discuss that with you all. Right now, the Water Enterprise Fund with the three hundred thousand dollar gift and the rate increase, it seems to be helping and we're heading in the right direction. Uh, we do have, uh, some budget adjustment requests. Uh, these items were both long-term and current goals for council. Um, the long-term goals, the. Both the town hall improvement and the classification compensation study. Going back to twenty thirteen and and probably even before that, but that's where I started seeing some of these discussions that council. Actually had a classic base in classification and compensation study. In the twenty thirteen budget, they had a line item for it. Unfortunately, that was never executed, so now. Things being as they are, budgets increased. I have had a couple of proposals. I thought this number was a little high. Turns out this number was probably almost right in line and actually a little bit low. The company that I have been discussing this with thinks that twenty five thousand is the upper number and they would think it's going to. thinks that twenty-five thousand is the upper number, and they would think it's going to come in, um, considerably less than this, but they wanted to be safe in that number, just in case they have to go out and look at. The, the challenge for us is trying to find a small city that owns and operates its own water treatment plant and water distribution system, and trying to find the compensation plans that match our budget in our side, so you may have to go out to a few more cities to be able to do that, and that could take extra work, so that's where you know, known is with this budget, um. I will say that when, when it comes to maintaining and owning and operating infrastructure requires regular maintenance, uh, coastal influences, kind of increase that need, um, again, the town hall windows and the rot repair have been on the list for a very long time. Uh, so we're finally on a spot where I think it's important that we get it now before it gets so far gone, it's going to cost a lot more money, um. And we can talk a little bit about that, uh, with our next slide here. Town hall windows and rot repair, so, uh, the white window on the left-hand side of your screen. Uh, we also have the windows here, for those of you who want to look at them, uh, physical samples here onsite, but I provided these for the folks watching online and out on internet. Uh, the town hall windows are Milgard Series V four hundred would be the windows that you would see here in town hall and the windows that aren't generally public facing, like out on, um, uh, Edward or Trinity Street. Uh, there are vinyl clad aluminum window. Our chief building official, who was a contractor here in county for a long time, recommended both of these products, both because of their durability, uh, in the case of the no guard window, it's affordability and, and kind of value pricing for the amount of windows we will have and longevity that they will provide because of the, what they're made of. Uh, the Weather Shield Premium Series is a it's more of an architectural style window, it has a wood, uh, interior and exterior, um, it matches what we kind of have out front and, and our chief building official thought that because those windows are so nice, we should probably replace them with something that would be able to stay and match both what's inside the civic club and inside the clerk's office. So that would be four windows, um, those go for approximately thirty-three hundred each, and the white vinyl clad windows are nine hundred and fifty, and that's an installed price, um, that's the best estimate we have right now without going out to bid. Uh, next slide again. Front porch flooring, so the carpet on the front porch, uh, I don't think it was made to last as many years as it's been here, it's pretty worn. Um, this product, uh, is again something that the building official recommended, it's the garage floor epoxy coating, but it would work well in porch, but for our front porch with the wear and tear that we get there, it's easy for staff to maintain. Staff suggests the gray color, uh, on the far right-hand side, that's a darker gray with the terrazzo look with those chips, it provides some slip resistance, um, be easy to maintain, it wouldn't show dirt as much, um, and it's good for salt environment, kind of stuff that we have here in town, so, uh, we estimate this product to be around sixty thousand dollars, people know more when we provide a bid document based on council's recommendation to go out and look at these windows and, and this, uh, package that is in staff report, and we will come back with a, uh, better bid package and estimate. How's it going? Uh, next, but we have one more slide in here, no? Okay, uh, we talked about the classification compensation study a little bit, but I will talk about it a little bit more. So this again is something that has been on the council list of goals and objectives, uh, I look back at least twenty thirteen, uh, some of the windows, um, there was an eight or a ten thousand dollar placeholder, uh, for this study back in twenty thirteen. I called that same company to ask them for a quote, and that's the quote that was a bit higher than the quote I got from, uh, from the other company that we're going with, R G S Regional Government Services, um. Just, things have gotten worse, then. I think the thing with the classification and compensation study, we have people that are working in classifications that don't exist in our inventory, we have people that are working out of classification, we have people working in classifications that need to be reclassified because they're doing things that aren't currently in their classification list, uh, compensation studies, I, right now, it, it's, a healthy organization has a cost, has a compensation, uh, range that's a more objective, uh, number and, and model, uh, currently, it's a much more subjective model, so it's up to the city manager to decide who gets a pay raise and when. Healthy organizations have a range, uh, of pay within a classification that gives the supervisor or city manager, in this case, the ability to to help put a person in the proper classification, and then they will get compensation based on that, uh, range of pay, um, and, and how they perform on an, in an evaluation on an annual basis. Um, that council was right in, in, in asking for this to be done, I think the time is now to get it done, and I'm asking this budget adjustment for twenty-five thousand dollars to, uh, allow the city manager to go out and, and execute. I'm happy to answer any questions or comments you may have on any. For all of this, uh, so good to talk.
Questions from the council?
Just, just a re- a memory refresher, I can never remember whether the three hundred thousand transfer was a gift or a loan.
It was a gift, and with the, with the provision that any additional funds would be a loan, so there was a hundred thousand dollar, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. And I think the rate study recommended a hundred thousand dollars in the first year, and then three fifty thousand dollar, uh, loans if needed to follow up. Right now, I'm, I'm not convinced that we're going to need any of it, but we'll see.
Okay, and, um, as far as classifications, I'm trying to picture what exactly, um, is that, exactly that means? Is that like a distinction between part-time employee and full-time, or a, uh, management employee versus, uh, frontline employer?
Uh, it's not part-time or full-time, it describes the task that employees perform uh, within a classification, so, uh, for example, our public works supervisor, uh, we have two different classifications of a, we have a water worker and a public works person. Um, I think we're too small of an organization to have those two classifications, it would work better to have a public works classification that included water work, and then you would have a range of, of uh, pay scales depending on what credential you hold within the water, uh, a T three, T two, or T one, um, that's just one example. Another example is we have a person who's working as a uh, is, who's working, he was hot, they were hired under one classification, they were promoted by the previous city manager to a classification that doesn't exist, and so.
What, what classification?
The classification they were hired was an admin assistant, and they were promoted to a deputy clerk. Uh, we have the work for a deputy clerk, there is no classification for a deputy clerk, so we don't have a job description, we don't have a pay scale. Um, so that, that is one challenge we have, we have, uh, we have, our city clerk is basically working as an assistant city manager, and there's an awful lot of work that is not included in his current job description, um, and then we have, that, that, to be fair, those same challenges go from the top of our classification all the way down to, to the bottom, it's, it's the same challenges we have with uh, the classification system, it's just, it doesn't match what we do today to the work that we've embarked our staff.
So classification kind of similar to job description?
It is similar, it is a job description, right, and then it matches that pay scale to that job description.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any questions, comments? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and I, I'll probably have a few final things, but I want to open the public comments about this, uh, about the budget, and also, uh, maybe some of the asks that I have for presumption, just dates.
Uh, yes, hi, and it's, um, just on the windows, the Milgard windows, we have those in our house. I think they're the same ones that I have to go look, uh, they made it about ten years, and then we had to do the warranty on them to, uh, because they, they put that gas in, and a little bit, et cetera, so. Um, so my only comment was the warranty process actually is pretty simple, pretty easy, just make sure you got a nice warranty on them. There we go.
Okay, get to now. Like, if we could look at it.
I will bring that, I will bring that up for a building.
Yeah, thank you. Other comments or questions about the budget, or some of the asks for the, uh, town hall? Right now. Right, um, uh, bringing back to the council then, um, I would like to say, just on the comp and, and classification study, um. I had one-on-ones with every employee last year as part of our three sixty review process, and I found a lot of discrepancies in kind of salary and job classification, that my experience as a manager is that that can lead to a lot of dissatisfaction, and we're such a small team here that we want, you know, every, it just needs to be a really good, high-functioning team, and morale is super important to that, so I, I'm a big, uh, proponent of that, and then the renovation of the town hall, you know, this is kind of the pride of the community and, and gathering place, and so this is just kind of phase one, I think, is getting the windows replaced, and, you know, getting the front porch and the solar, uh, you know, what would you call it, the electrical panel, that's all part of that front porch renovation. And then down the road, I think we talked about maybe a year from now doing the, you know, painting the exterior, we'll get to that, so.
Yes, Mayor, thank you for reminding me, so FY twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, FY, we would ask the council to consider uh, capital for projects to paint the exterior of the building, and then the next year, we would want the council to, uh, consider approving the floor and the interior of town hall.
Yeah, which would be really great, I think, and, and I'm happy to see the mid-year budget, uh, you know, on track and, and actually doing pretty well. Um, the only thing I would maybe add is if we, if we had some extra spare change to, we may want to continue to look at the A B systems, and I know you're, you know, well, well aware of the feedback, but we're continuing to get feedback that online hybrid meetings, uh, recordings, things like that, or.
I, I will say that the city clerk today had our sound person in to do a, adjustment of our sound board, and we did get some feedback from them, we're going to look at a few different options, and we will come back to you, uh, when we get those improvements or start looking at those improvements.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. And will they, will these slides, the budget slides be included in the public documents? But they, like, when you guys do the PowerPoints, they're, they're usually added, right, Dave, to the?
To the.
The packet.
Site, to the packet?
Yeah, or, or uploaded to the website, like, you could have the agenda, the packet, and then the presentation, would that be okay?
Cause I. Yeah.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, because I, I, uh, folks come looking for the PowerPoints and aren't sure where to find them.
It's all public work project, it's all available.
Okay, yes, public information, okay, thank you, I'm just, um, relaying some public feedback. All right, any, anyone else? Don't want to talk about color schemes for the paint yet, I'm, okay. We'll get to that. And that's going to be, that's going to be a fundus, I'm looking forward to that.
Add extra time.
Yeah. Um, okay, um, I don't think we had any specific questions about the budget, it was very thorough, so. Uh, kudos for that, thank you, South. Uh, how about future agenda items, Tyler?
Don't, don't we need to approve the budget amendments?
That's probably good, yeah, thank you. Would you like to?
I feel like I've been making too many, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to all my colleagues, they want.
All right.
You guys fight it out.
You don't have to, if you want to.
Yeah, it's the.
Uh, I, I propose that we accept the sixty thousand dollar for town windows, et cetera, and the twenty-five thousand for classification and compensation.
As well as the, um, mid-year budget.
The mid-year budget update and discussion, yes.
Okay. That's what.
I second.
And there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, thanks, South, great work. Uh, okay, we're at the point in the, where the council did discuss future agenda items, and the public can weigh in, some ideas as well, so. Council, any future agenda items you'd like to see, Kita?
I think anything right now.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, we have plenty to work on, plenty to chew on already, I, I guess the only thing maybe water leaks at some point, um, we've done a lot of work on the distribution system, I don't know, I think I, I, I guess I continue to be kind of concerned that the level of, and I don't know if that'd be a whole agenda item, but.
We, we do have an update, Mayor, if you'd like a little update on that.
Sure.
Which week, so we support the one.
No, no, the, the RC, our leak rate for the loss.
Oh, that was a nice point.
Yeah, so, we're talking about the water loss?
Yeah.
So this, yeah, twenty percent was our water losses this month. But we believe that to be even lower because we had some flushing, there was a lot of activity going on with the tank, new tank got brought onto online, there's a lot of water line flushing that wasn't accounted for, that we're going to bring into the mix next month, which will then bring our overall average for the year, you know, month by month percentage, you know, will be. But, uh, that makes a big difference, this particular month, twenty percent, I think, uh, fifteen percent is kind of from what I've heard, at least from the drone, who seems to have familiarity with the systems, you know, fifteen to twenty percent, is that?
Fifteen percent is what, uh, we probably don't want higher than that, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's good or bad, it's, it's a, it's a common, so, um, with that said, I think our, our, our water system the average water loss, everything's, uh, is, is pretty good, but we do have immediate spikes, as we know from Cedar Drive, I mean, that, that can really destroy, you know, our, um, our leak, yeah.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I just, you know, I even just harken back to like the water advisory committee, you know, requesting, you know, new water tank, and we did the new water tank, and so that was great, and um, you know, we've done a lot of things that were on that list, and one of them was still get the distribution system.
We can come back with another, for her.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think they, they have an ongoing, they're always looking, you know, to improve the leak situation, so. It's just a matter of isolating the problem areas and finding the money to replace.
Yes.
That's a good.
Yeah, yeah, and I know staff worked hard on the water folks to address that. All right, uh, from the public, any, uh, future agenda items that you'd like to see?
Um, if I could just say from my seat, we did get the Mark Sundberg, why would they fix today? Says I'll help. It was hard to track down, and then just our item, uh, back on the agenda regarding the, uh, M O A. Of most of that document to a, a city manager, and that's the item to come back with.
Okay, thank you, so we have the M O A, that was item number five, is getting requested, that's a future agenda item. Other things that folks would like us to discuss? All right, well then, uh, we will, uh, close tonight's meeting at seven thirty, I think this might be a record.
Yeah, yeah.